All right. Good afternoon. The time is three P M. It's March third, two thousand and twenty five. This is a special meeting budget workshop of the Argyle I S D Board of Trustees. At this time, we'll determine if a quorum is present.
Leona McDade, present.
Josh Westrom, present.
Rich McDowell, present.
William Arthur, present.
Matt Slateen, present.
Sam Slateen, present. We do have a quorum established. This time we'll have our pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honoring the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
You in a better place? All right, we'll have our, our opening prayer. Dear Father God, we just come to you today just as humble servants of this district and this community. Lord, we pray for our faculty. Lord, we pray for our students. Lord, in that you not only just give them the, the energy to persevere, but the desire to strive, to honor you in all that they do. Lord, we ask you, watch over us as a board, guide us, and in the name of your son's name we pray. Amen. All right, we don't have anyone signed up for public forum, so at this time, we will move from the dice out to the workshop.
Start the budget process, the budget workshop. This will be our first official workshop for the twenty five, twenty six budget. So Ms. Stewart's gonna lead us through that. She's gonna kind of take us through some historical information, where we've been, to this, where we are at this point. Believe that you will see and have discussions that we're in a very different position right now than we were last year at this time, so we'll talk through that. And again, this is very, this is kind of preliminary kickoff to that process, and we'll make it just a collaborative. As we go through, if you have a question on any of your slides, just stop us and we'll be happy to work through.
All right, thank you. So kind of looking at our agenda for today, everything involved are the things we would like to go over. Some of the other information is included just because it is part of the budget process, and if you ever want to go back and reference some information, you'll have it available on, on this presentation. But we do want to kind of go back over how we got here. This is the same discussion that we brought forward last year. We were talking about what got us in this process, starting in the eighty sixth legislative session in two thousand and nineteen. That was the last time the school funding formula was really revealed. It was increased for all schools. It was intended to be, but some of us received the formal transition grant to make that increase available for all districts. And then a major thing that happened in that funding formula was there was a change from prior year to current year taxable assessed values in the calculation. And that made a large impact on growing districts, on anybody that had an increase in property values. So that was a significant change, not a positive change for Argyle, but a significant change for Argyle. Then fast forward to the eighty eighth and two thousand and twenty three. We all remember we talked about how big of a surplus there were. Everybody thought that something was gonna happen for school funding because of all the record inflation. There wasn't any action in four special sessions to spend the money allocated to public schools. However, they did do a property tax relief bill in the second special session. And for Argyle I S D individually, that lowered our M and O rate a little over eighteen and a half cents. So that was a big deal for property taxpayers. There were some hold harmless put into the deals here to make that revenue neutral for school districts. So it was a great thing for property taxpayers, and it didn't change our revenue at all. So that was, that was good. So the impact on the twenty four, twenty five budget, we started back in last February. We went from February to June having some school budget work, school board workshops to reduce our deficit. We went from projected four and a half million down to five hundred thousand. These are some of the areas that we wanted to bring forward and remind you of what we did. We eliminated certain categories in support style. We reduced our department on campus budgets. We reduced our compensation plan. We had class size increases at the secondary schools, and we looked at increasing some of our fees and other revenue options that we had available to us at that time. The board then approved a one-time compensation plan that increased our deficit to one point two nine million, and that's how we started the school year. And where we're technically at today, even though you have a budget amendment that we're talking about to change that. Of course, we all know that the enrollment exceeded projections, specifically at our elementary levels. We have added additional classroom teachers because of those additional students. We've added back a few support positions. We've added additional compensation. Now, this is pending formal approval at our next board meeting. That's the additional one-time payment that was presented to you as an idea at this last board meeting. And then a balanced budget. Again, our, our budget amendment was brought to you last meeting, and that's pending approach final action for our next meeting. That's where we stand right now on twenty four, twenty five budget. And where we are today, we started eighty ninth legislative session and goes January fourteenth through June second. A couple of you were able to go with us to Austin, which was a great experience last week. I know Dr. Carpenter probably has a lot more to say about that if you want to at this point.
I just, for those that do not know, I know Ms. Trustees Arthur and Trustees Westrom rode to with us that day on Wednesday. We started early. What did we leave, five thirty that morning? Got back about eight o'clock? You were driving, eight thirty. One of the servants, Mr. Haren went, Ms. Stewart went, and then we had, we had three staff members. We had a high school teacher, Stephen Orlovsky from the high, over at the high school. We had Maddie Fairchild, fifth grade teacher, E L A R teacher from South. And then we also had assistant principal Katie Hayden from South. And then Jen De La Porte and Hannah Robinson, community members, members and parents. So we had a full house. We had a full stacked day. We actually met every one of our appointments. Nobody got canceled, so that was great. Sometimes you get down there and you get canceled and you get bumped, but if they weren't in there, they had somebody there to meet us, and then they ended up coming to meet with us. But we were able to meet with staffers from Senator Creighton's office, and then Senator Parker himself coming off the floor from the here. They had the press release on, they were doing the press conference on Senate Bill twenty six that had passed out of the Senate late Wednesday afternoon, and then we met with our state representatives, Iris Hopper, Little, and Hayes. And additionally, Brad Buckley, who oversees the, the House Education Committee. So it was a packed day. We were going every minute of the, of the time, but we had some very good conversations. We had a lot of really just open dialogue with them and some follow-up. We've already, we're working on some follow-up to get them, even to continue the conversations with them. So do y'all have anything you'd like to add to that, just from your perspectives, kind of where we are?
I found it to be honestly more productive than I had anticipated in terms of the dialogue and feedback and the back and forth and exchange of ideas with representatives and their staff, who seem really open to ideas to solve some of the challenges that we face. And I thought that the teachers and the parent involvement added another layer of like, you know, it just, it just added a lot to the presentation that we had. For them, to those teachers, Mr. Orlovsky and Ms. Fairchild, speaking to those legislators directly about what this year's been like and the challenges that they faced, I think was, you know, penetrating in some ways for those folks. And hard for them to kind of use their talking points around public ed, being fat and bloated, you know, and all this, and they were, they were on point. And so.
I agree. I think the staff members really stood out a lot. I think they explained things in a way that the representatives hadn't heard before, and they were very open to listening. They took lots of notes about our individual district and then applying that to others. It was surprising to know how much they don't know what their legislation does to specific districts and how it affects each one of us differently. But I was thankful that they really did listen and seemed ready to work with us. I thought that they seemed open to it, so. But Mr. Orlovsky and Ms. Fairchild, and I think Mrs. Hayden, the way that she explained a lot of the tier one and tier two involvement, they just weren't unaware. So it was a good day.
And I think, you know, we, we've had, I, they've all reached out. I mean, the representatives themselves have reached out for some follow-up information. So I think the dialogue and the collaboration between our district and them is definitely open, but I also think it's in our approach with them and how we reproached our needs versus, you know, knowing that it needs to be collaborative and that we focus on what we all agree on and not so much what we don't agree on.
Thank you. And then there's also quite a few bills that have been proposed on both sides, the Senate and the House, that have to do with school funding. You know, as we talked about, as we were doing Austin, we're reminded quite a few, quite often that this is early in the session and that things are bound to change from now till the end. And we'll just keep watching it and seeing if we can find, you know, the important pieces that stick out for us, what may benefit, what may hurt us, and keep that dialogue open. There's also a link to our Take Action Argyle website. If anyone wants to go out there and look at that of how to contact your representatives and allocate on behalf of Argyle I S D. All of that to be said, we are planning this budget on current law. That's the only information that we have in front of us right now that we can count on. So we'll, we'll go through the budget development process. We'll use current laws. We'll get it planned. We started in February with just some preliminary information. Right now, we're at the first workshop. We'll have our regular meetings. We'll get some information from the appraisal district towards the end of April. They'll bring back their certifies in July, which will be preliminary. And then in, I believe, we're gonna have another budget workshop on May nineteenth. And then we'll have our compensation plan recommendation in our June meeting. And then again, our certified appraisal district values. And then we are planning at this point in time to recommend adopting both the budget and tax rate at our August meeting, pending litig, you know, pending legislation may change when we adopt our tax rate, but we will aim for our budget being in August. All right, so again, we're doing it based on current law. We have budget workshops now, and sorry to change, or to be determined, but it's a May board meeting. We're gonna continue to look at all of our ways that we can be efficient. We're using our I S D financial strategy team. As y'all remember, we started this team last year. When we knew that we were facing a large deficit. That's made up of superintendent and her cabinet, and we've added in a few other members as well. And we go through, this year, we're meeting every other week. I believe last year, we were meeting weekly. But this year, we feel like we can take that on as an every other week from now until we got planned through June. We need to continue meeting after that to get us through, as we will. We also created a budget and finance community council this year that's made up of members of our community that expressed interest. Whenever they could fill out, you know, if they wanted to be on some form of a, a committee or a council. And so we have about twelve individuals. We had our first meeting already. We have our second meeting this Wednesday. And they are, they got a, a introduction to school finance one oh one at our first meeting. And then this time, we're gonna look at some of the budget priorities that we're talking about tonight. We're gonna discuss with them, get some input from our individuals there that are in our community, get some ideas that may be different than what we have, some things that they've seen that may or may not work in outside industries. And then we'll bring back any input that they have to that financial strategy team internally and discuss that moving forward. And they will meet two more times after this week through this budget cycle. This is something that we plan on continuing every year and getting the input from our community on. We are planning on recommending compensation plan for staff this year. We would like to recommend a balanced budget. Again, that'll depend on our priorities and where we can fit that in. And then we're gonna continue our legislative advocacy plan throughout this process for public school funding. Just a reminder that legislative, every two years, our rules can change, our funding formula can change, our mandates can change of how we have to spend our money. We haven't revised our basic allotment since two thousand and nineteen, and again, just wanted to throw that Take Action Argyle in there for anybody else that wanted to look at that. So I tried to condense the basics of school finance with the most important things down to one slide, so you don't hear an hour's conversation on this school finance one oh one again, because I think we've covered that a lot. So just a reminder of some of our important topics when we're looking at our budget. We are funding based on an allotment per student. It is attendance-based funding, so remember, they have to be here to get credit for that funding, even though we have to budget our expenses based on enrollment. We've got weighted allotment funding, so you've got your special education, your G T, your C T E, dyslexia, and some others that are in there on special allotment funding weighted. We have our M and O tax rate is required to be compressed by the state depending on the growth of the overall state values. Historically, we've been at the floor of that, and I expect us to continue with our, our value growth in the area. Some of the legislative bills that are out there drop that floor significantly for next year. Based on, I believe the House side has some additional compression that they want to get property tax relief with, and the way that they're looking at doing that is by compressing that tax rate more. The Senate side is looking at more of a home state exemption increase to, to provide property tax relief. So they're a little bit far apart where they're starting, so we'll just have to see, but that could play some part in what we actually set our tax rate at. The I N S tax rate, of course, is based on voter-approved bonds and what it takes to pay those bonds. Just as a reminder, we are at fifty cents, and at this point in time, we plan on staying at fifty cents. And as our share increases, the state share decreases. So as our local taxpayers pay more on the M and O side, and there's more homes and there's more businesses out there, we'll collect more money. Just remember, that's offset on the state side because we do have a funding per student. Allotment is not based on necessarily what you bring in locally. And then budget priorities are based on our district strategic vision. And I know y'all are aware that we're going through an update on a strategic vision. So we have our priorities in our strategic vision that were in place currently, and then we've also got what we're looking at that turning into from this new plan that we're working on right now. But that's what your budget should be based on. All right, so I'm gonna skip through some of these, just kind of go over. If you have questions, please stop me. But these are some of the ones that we've talked about quite a bit that are here more for your reference. Just talk about, if you remember, we use a demographer's report for estimating revenues. If that demographer's report is off, either way, our revenues will be off either way. So if they have overestimated students, we will be short on revenue, and if they have underestimated students, we will have more revenue coming in like we have this year. Just a little bit of our growth there and how it continues to climb. Nineteen twenty, we were just under thirty-five hundred students. And we're, I think today, we're actually at over sixty-two hundred, but snapshot, over sixty-one. And just to slide in there, as you can see, each campus and how they lined up based on the projected enrollment. And then the values come out July twenty-fifth from our appraisal district. Just a reminder that we are a little over ninety percent residential in our tax base. And then this is just a chart of tax rates throughout the years, and if you look at this, that overall dark blue line going down, that's our total tax rate that has decreased over the last several years. And you see the big drop from twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four. That was that property tax relief package that the state put into effect. When we're looking at our expenditures, of course, we do our campus budgets based on resource allocation. We look at our campus leadership team. We have special funding requests. We, we started this last year with our departments. We did zero-based budgeting, if you remember. This had been here, we'd always think kind of, okay, well, if we're increasing about three percent or four percent, then we expect your department to increase about that much, and that's the budget. And now we are actually going back to every single line item has to be detailed and justified. And so we're gonna continue that. I think it's a good practice going forward, and we're gonna continue that on the department side. And then we still look at our five-year plans from our departments. Just kind of a glance at what our campus budgets look like. This is just a summary page from there of how we develop them. When we're talking about our enrollment, our current year, you'll notice there has a note that it was on the planning estimates. So when we're planning budget, we're planning what we planned off of, not what we're currently at, to what we planned versus what we're planning for next year. We track the change and then the total allotment, and then we're gonna continue with our ten percent budget contingency. Like we did this year, this was our first year to put that in place, and we put it in place, and we didn't have kind of a follow-up on, okay, well, what does that mean? How do you get that back? So we've talked about now that if a campus meets or exceeds their demographer's estimate on snapshot date, then they would receive that ten percent contingency back into their funding. And that way, that way, they've actually met all of their funding. They haven't come in underneath. So kind of put that in place. It's a learning guideline for us of, okay, now you said we can do it. What does that actually mean for? So we've made that change for this year.
Real quick, and we all recognize that current year, those, obviously, we know that Jane Russman was off on enrollment there, so that obviously was the projection coming in. We know well over that. The next year, that's what the new elementary zones, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then Russman has their, they are, they're the ones that received their contingency already, correct?
Yes, they have. So they're the only one that received it this year. So we wanted to put something in place and actually say, okay, what are the guidelines for that going forward? So, you know, we're talking to some others, you know, Dr. Carpenter had experience in that, and other campus. We talked to several other districts about what their guidelines, you know, some of them just say, well, it's contingency. We don't ever let the, you know, we don't ever give those dollars back. It's basically a ten, you know, their ten percent cut that they just used. And then some of them use that snapshot date. If he's met it or exceeded, then you receive that, and that's what we chose to, to go with moving forward. Okay, our twenty-five, twenty-six budget priorities. So we developed these as a team from information and input with the superintendent's teacher advisory council. I know y'all heard quite a bit about that over the last couple of months. We took some information from the listening and learning campus chats that Dr. Carpenter's had at every campus, where teachers were able to come in and all staff were able to come in and bring any concerns or any ideas that they had and discuss that with Dr. Carpenter.
Still have middle school, sixth grade center, and South to complete on those.
And then we also got, gathered some principal feedback as well. So what we would, and this is where we would like some interaction and some discussion, when we're talking about our, what we want our budget priorities to be next year. So we'd love it if you have some, some input on these slides. So what we've designed around is a compensation package consideration. You know, we need to retain and recruit staff, and we need to retain and recruit the best staff that we possibly can. So some ideas were, we're sent across the board, raise for all staff categories. That's historically how we've done things here in the district. We talked about a tiered teacher raise based on experience and then a percent across the board for everybody else. So maybe you look at, you know, zero to ten years is this much, a ten to, you know, nineteen is this, a twenty and on is that, you know, you can set your levels at different amount, but a tiered based on experience. And then we're talking about possibly increasing the district insurance contribution. You know, as a board, y'all were agreeable and decreased that last year fifty dollars a month for those that take the insurance. However, when we do comparisons, we are still on the very long end of that. So fifty dollars was a great stat, but that may be something that we need to look at increasing again, especially with the rising cost of insurance. And I believe we saw in the bills, and I believe it's on both the Senate and the House version of their Senate, I mean, their school finance bills, that they're both wanting to allocate enough funding in there for terrorist active care so that it limits the premium increase to ten percent a year that the employees fill in. While that's great, ten percent is still a large increase, and so that's why we feel like that we may need to look at our, our contribution on the insurance side. So do y'all have any thoughts on any of those ideas or other ideas on compensation?
How many of the employees are utilizing the district insurance?
Sixty, fifty to sixty percent, does that sound good?
I haven't run the data for this year.
For this year, but last year, when we were doing this, it was
Right about that.
Just under sixty percent last year.
I mean, that one's hard because it's not
It's not everybody.
By everybody. So if there's a, you know, whether you're getting some kind of raise that you can allocate to your own account or insurance. I mean, I'm sure.
Can you do, can you do like an insurance stipend for whether you're on our insurance or not? Where you gave everybody fifty bucks, whether they were, if they're on our insurance, it applies to them. If it's not, they use it with the insurance that they're doing, or they use it for pharmacy bills or whatever. Does it have to be? I mean, that way, everybody gets it.
You're right.
Like legally, you could do it?
I don't know for sure.
We could look into it. I mean, yeah. I haven't heard of that. That's definitely an idea we can check.
I haven't heard of it either.
I think historically, it's always been the, kind of the argument is that we, we wanted to always give a percentage raise. Does it affect it everybody versus increasing the insurance contribution? But in doing so, it's put us down at the very bottom. But our salaries, if you compare them to local, they're still pretty competitive.
You could do a one-time stipend for those people who don't have health insurance with the district. And then the others are given their increasing district contribution monthly.
I'm just thinking some notes.
Can they can't, once, is there, is it just like in corporate where you have to commit to be on it for the year? You can't switch midway through the year and go to?
We have to be, have a qualifying event.
So if we had already given them that and then qualifying event, there would have to be some
Mechanism to pull it back.
Or to just not continue it.
Right.
What percentage has our insurance been going up each year generally? I mean, you talk about them capping it at ten, but.
Yeah, it's more than ten percent, but it varies depending upon the plan that you're on, because there's different plans, but some plans have gone up thirteen, fourteen percent, so not quite as much.
And two years ago, they went to regionalized premiums, where it used to just be statewide premiums. Now it's regionalized. So obviously, in an area like this, where our premiums are higher than a rural
Risk pool, yeah.
Direct feedback on your bullet points from me, or I've never really been a big fan of percent across the board type compensation. I understand why you would do that. I just don't think that necessarily is the best way to go about it. And I like the more tiered approach to it based on experience and maybe other factors.
Maybe there's a combination of that, that there is a across-the-board compensation increase. And then based upon what tier you're on, there's additional, just thought.
And I, I just will raise the point I've raised. I'm sure you're probably gonna get to it maybe in another priority, but I feel like compensation is one element of this job. I'd always welcome more feedback from teachers, but I'm sure you're getting it from your advisory counseling. They all want raises. But there's, there's a, there's a quality of life aspect to this job, and I think teachers get into it for, they, they do it for the, you know, the sense of service and rewarding, seeing these kids every day and seeing them learn and advance, and that's why they do it. They wanna be well-supported. And that can come in the form of compensation, and that could come in the form of smaller class sizes. It could come in the form of more behavioral support. It can come in the form of more interventionist. So it doesn't always have to be money. Not like to see a strike, the right balance.
Have you gotten any feedback on any of these from your teacher advisory council?
This is all built from, from all year, talking to people. Yeah, and there's more slides. This is, this is just the compensation slide.
And they all They're agreeable to these themes.
Well, we haven't taken this back to them. I've just themed all the conversation and what I'm hearing into these components. We haven't taken any of this back to anybody because we're too far away from even knowing what we can afford as far as that goes, but.
This might be ahead of slides as well, but have y'all started looking at staffing?
And that's on the, the next couple of slides. To, both your points, to looking at a balanced approach from both angles of that, from compensation and support. So we're trying to, trying to bring back a, a balance. But again, trying to fit it, everything in with some form of a priority. What, what's your first priority? What's your second priority? And these are not laid out in an order. These are just brought to you right here. So any feedback also as we go through these, if any type of order or priority would be great as well.
And when you say a tiered approach, are you saying zero to five years of experience would get this percentage, five to 10 would get another percentage and?
Seen it done, I've seen it done in districts before where it's been zero to five, six to 10, and then like 11 to 20. I've seen it zero to nine, 10 to nine, in the, the 10, so yes, that is what we're talking about. For teachers in those categories.
It can either be a percentage or a number.
I've seen it with a percentage, like a three and a half, and then a four, and then a four and a half, or three, four, five.
So rewarding for time in the district.
And we've, we've run those numbers. We have, Mr., our Dr. Daniel has those. So I think we have about seventy-some in the zero to nine year range, we have about a hundred and fifty in the 10 to 20, and another a hundred and fifty or so. I believe over the 20-year range.
I know there, there were some districts, uh, one particular out east, Longview, I believe, is doing like a merit-based program by campus. Um, where, kind of like what Mr. Westrom's talking about. Um, hasn't the campus improved across the measurables? Then the people on that, if you, if you got one, you got X percent, if you got two out of three, or maybe you had to get, maybe there were five and you had to get at least two to, to get qualified. But the interesting part I thought about it was that it gave a raise based on percentage to everyone on that campus, including every staff member, not just teachers.
Right.
Cause they all play a role in some way, shared form, so I, I do agree with the balanced approach. I think a part of that could be experience. Uh, but I think, you know, in today's world, we gotta start looking at merit, some sort of merit-based evaluation by campus probably as well.
Yeah, I mean, I'd, I'll say something, maybe it's probably controversial, not intended to be, but I mean, it is a more of a, a merit-based, just, I mean, it reflects more of a private practice, what happens. It's, it's, I mean, compensation outside of government is primarily merit-based compensation. Um, and to the extent that this, the schools can start to reflect that, it'd be great. Now, thinking that through some, I worry about what's that, how do you identify what's meritorious? And so I would be concerned if you said, well, we think it's meritorious if your students are performing well on the star. Because then that's going to have this effect of these teachers teaching, teaching more to the star. There's going to be pressure from everybody to do better on the star, and that's not necessarily what I would want. Either, so I don't know where the merit, it does it, does it come from our own assessments? Say, your tier ones are doing this, your tier twos are doing this, your tier threes are doing this. I, I don't know, but that would be the hard part, I think.
I think that's why it's, it's not been a common practice in education. Because when you try to do attendance, then you get the, you know, when they're sitting, you're trying to get them to come to school, no matter if they're separate, you know, you get into all of those components. So I think that's probably the reason it hasn't necessarily been a, a practice as much in the field of education as it has been private practice. But yes, you would have to essentially, based on our, our collaborative visioning and the goals set by the district and the priorities, set a community-based accountability and determine what are those metrics that you want to grade each campus on or each, you know, as staff category, whatever it is, to earn merit-based pay.
All right, that's what I was gonna say, is it would come from the district's strategic plan or the vision for the district, right? If it's, if this is what it is and we're measured on certain things specifically at the high school, how does that backup look like? How do we start preparing that? We do it in extracurricular activities all the time. I want them to be here by the time they're, get to this grade. How do I back up and start getting them ready for that? So, no, I don't think it's easy, and that, yes, I think it probably will be, would be controversial, but that's.
I mean, cause it has to be based on objective criteria.
Correct.
And I, I suppose it does. I mean, again, in private practice, it doesn't necessarily have to be. I mean, I guess you could set performance goals, and if they meet on sales or whatever, they get a bonus.
There's also the, too, like, there's all, we keep talking, we've, we've talked as previous boards about measuring, like tech's one of them. Like, how do we, how do we measure that tech is actually helping us in the ring? We're spending all this money, and we've been lucky enough, the community's blessed us with bond money to pay for tech. That's gonna stop eventually. And you're gonna have to find a way, so we were trying to figure out a way, how do you measure this, the, uh, effectiveness of tech in the classroom? That's hard to do. That's really hard to do.
And what's the right grade level?
Yeah, where do, where do you start? And where do you, you know, when the whole one-to-one concept came out, it was one-to-one from K to 12. I think we've, we've, we've found ways to address it and use the resources that we have, but and by the way, whenever you do it, it's never going to be set stone. You're gonna do something, you're gonna come back and go, man.
Didn't work.
That didn't work.
And they do that.
We didn't realize the repercussion.
And you did that, yeah, you gesture compensated, like that, that was a good quota, that was a bad quota. It just, it just. I mean, I, I hear you. I guess it's, it's just something I've always expressed, is how do you let the, the, the teachers that you know are, are, are doing an exceptional job? How do they know that? If you can't, if you have to pay everybody the same. You know, how are, how are you distinguishing that? The exceptional with. And I, I, I mean, I wish that we, we could do it in a, in a, in a way that was
Well, that's what questions you, you posed last Wednesday, and we were in Austin to our legislators, and they talk about their teacher pay increase. You ask those questions and, you know, so.
Did you get deer in the headlights? Did they have a good answer?
TIA.
They say teacher incentive allotment, yeah, is kind of.
Listen, that's been out there for a while. I know you're looking into it. That's not what I'm talking about.
No.
Just so we know, hey, that's not what I mean. Um, this district, I saw Sam, I told Sam about it five, six years ago at Tassie-Tasby, they did a presentation on it. They, they did teacher incentive allotment and immediately said, this isn't working. They created their own. And every one of their dis, every one of their schools, in terms, they were using the ratings from the state at that point. And the qualifications for each campus to get a grade.
Was still letter grade.
Which was back, but that was, this was the previous version. And every one of their campuses excelled. So it gets, it's there. There's an opportunity there. I don't know, I'm not sure TIA's. Me personally.
Yeah, but let's just speak quick here, what you've said, it's about a balance, like we don't want to forsake a large majority of the district for, you know, teachers that are excelling, and we don't want to forsake the teachers that are excelling, you know, at, at the expense of it just being
One size fits all.
Yeah, so, yeah, and obviously we haven't given great answers. We're just, we're just throwing things out right here, but it's something we can continue to talk about.
We've got, got some good notes to go back and look at, so thank you. Okay, the next, um, set of priorities. Uh, we would like to maintain our current class size ratios. Um, so where, where we are at this year is K to four is 22 to one, and that's based on state law. Fifth, we typically go to 25 to one. And then in secondary, sixth to eighth is 25 to one, and ninth through 12th is 25 to one, and four, and 27 to one in elective. Those were our planning numbers for this year, and we, um, don't feel like we need to change that. We don't want to increase that at all. Um, so our goal would be to stay within that.
The districts that have already announced increasing that, we're hearing from staff in those districts for openings here. So with, our principals are already getting contacted.
Can we decrease that?
Yeah, I want to change it.
Well, I think that's where the balance comes. I think, I think the challenge in that, and looking at what we're already projected for next year in our sections, is we're, we're, we're already that, we already have maximum number of sections, those campuses, except for JRE right now, and there's only three that would not be in their maximum sections based on demographer numbers and the, the classroom space over there.
So, okay, so that was the next question. We can bring numbers down if you have space.
If you have space.
If you don't have space, it's not even a.
You bring numbers down if you have space and you put all of your priority.
Right, right, oh, yeah, yeah.
All your.
Basically, what we have right now, like, next year at South, based on the demographer numbers, we would have one fifth-grade section. But we would be over, instead, we would need an extra second-grade section, which is a wash. West, we would have an extra kinder, extra first, but we'd be over in second and fourth, which is a wash, so they would have to use that space. And then JRE would have an extra kinder first and fifth right there. Hilltop, we, we're still counting rooms because it's a different map. I mean, it's a different capacity, but there, there are capacity, so it'd be very limited anyway, what we would have room to add over there. So we did check those, um, earlier today, just to kind of see where we, where we had space. If we were to try to go to 20 to one, we don't even have a room to do it.
The other thing to consider for elementaries, if you decrease those class sizes, we have more sections. With more sections, we need more places to put them during specials. So then that turns into what we have, three or four classes at PE instead of two. Are we putting two classes in, um, you know, in art class, and that becomes very difficult for those teachers to manage? So then do we add another specials class, and then what is it? Where do we put that classroom? So there's that part of it, too, that has to be considered.
And I, and I respect that feedback greatly. Uh, but I'm, I'm challenged that, that for, or look for opportunities to be created. I don't think, I would like to avoid going into next year where we're starting our sections with a bunch of one to 22s, and then all of a sudden we have some growth. And then we're busting up classes all throughout the year, adding sections and all that. I mean, I, if, if we can reduce those class sizes so that it can plan for some growth, it would be great. If you can't do it in all grades, then maybe we can maybe target specific grades, like kindergarten. Um, you know, where we can say, hey, look, we don't, we don't want 22 kindergartners in there and having to spend a month with 25 until we get in the teacher. We're gonna, we're gonna hold it at 20, and we're gonna eat up the space we have to do that. I mean, those are things I would, I, I, I don't like the fact that fifth grade, it's an elementary school class. I don't like fifth grade at 25 to one. Because you can doesn't mean you should. And those are, that's the pushback I would give is to really think creatively about how we can reduce these class sizes in the next couple of years.
So the way we have it figured, like, for example, we're projected 134 kindergartners at South. And that's 6.09 sections. So whereas we might have gone into this year, gone with six sections, just to see if everybody shows, we have it planned in there, we go with seven, which is giving us 19, a ratio of 19 to start. So I think mo, I think several of them will fall kind of in that range. Now, there's one, um.
They all round up.
Right.
That makes sense, so regardless of where that division comes out to, the thing on those, we've rounded up. We don't want to take anything and round down.
So crazy out-of-the-box question. Do we have any room at the sixth-grade center to take a campus's fifth-grade kids? Or two? There's nothing.
She's begging us to take sixth graders out now. Cause we're already at five-hundred, or pushing five-hundred, so. As far as classrooms, she may have a couple. Did you ever get how many sixth-grade classrooms are left? She's got open right now.
I'm reading her to seven.
She's got seven, seven, that's it.
Yes.
And that's, that's before the growth comes for next year. That's currently.
I think our fifth-grade class is our biggest class in the district this year.
Thinking our big.
The Hilltop fifth-grade class has 175 students in it, and every other class is about 130. It's a very large class.
And my other question from before also, I know in your conversations last, you know, this school year went more over the summer when we were needing to make some cuts in the things, you came to us to try and get the deficit down and everything, and positions that were eliminated. In, in speaking with the teachers, and I'm not advocating one way or the other, just asking for information, did they, or even as time has gone on now, and they've looked without some of these support people, have they come back and given you guys feedback on whether or not they'd rather have the full class, or they'd rather have the support?
That's the next slide, yes.
Okay.
Cause we, that's been part of the advisory council. Um, that's why we gave them the aides this spring, because we couldn't give them the specialists back. Um, but that's what we've addressed on this slide here.
So can, continue with that, trying to come up with some form of a balance, so that, um, again, it's not all compensation and not all class sizes and all support, but some form of a little bit of all. Um, we've looked at elementary reading and math intervention support. Um, the elementary support, or sorry, special program support. Um, when you're looking at that, you're talking, um, you know, bilingual, uh, GT, those type of things. Um, elementary and sixth-grade center behavior support. And sixth-grade center and middle school testing support. Those were the areas that, uh, were brought to us the most as far as, uh, where we were lacking in support.
And Dr. Jordan met with principals last week reviewing the themes from the, the teacher feedback and staff feedback, and it's all aligned. And then she met with principals kind of how that would look if we were able to bring those, what, what would make the most sense on campuses. From a structure of those positions, because when we, when we eliminated the specialist coming into this year, every campus was doing it differently. There wasn't a common practice of what was going on. And so, um, that's what the things that she was talking to them about, what, what they, what their needs were now that they've done without it. And that's one of the things I've heard on the campuses, the ones I have met with, is it's given them a really good understanding of what they really need. Cause they didn't know what they really needed till they didn't have it, and now they understand better that maybe the way it was being used wasn't as effective, is now they understand where they need the support.
So y'all are coming up with a way to break back the interventionist positions and support positions in a more targeted, effective way?
Correct. Might mean that campuses are sharing some as we ease back into it, but and talking to the principals, they felt like they could make that work.
Well, it'd be interesting, if, if this is the feedback you're getting from the advisory council on, on all of these different areas. It'd be interesting to know, you know, at a campus level and collectively, what is a priority for each of the individuals? So, you know, South may have priorities that are different from West or Hilltop or Rustman. Um, and, and which may help us glean information into, you know, what's different on that campus? You know, is it, is it a style approach that's different? Uh, but getting some of that feedback on what those individual teachers and campus admin feel is, you know, most important, and, you know, kind of rank it and understand how they're feeling. Taking, you know, again, your information, what you've gleaned, sending it back to them, how would you rate this? What, what do you feel is most important for you individually, or what you're seeing on your campus? And having that kind of information.
I think that would be what our next step after this workshop would be, is to take the priorities that we've gleaned, listening to you all, if y'all agree with those, and put them out to staff. And say, get, to get feedback, so that when we come back, our main the next workshop, then we have the staff input on, on those priorities.
Can you help me understand what a reading interventionist does? I mean, does that, that's more than when my mother-in-law comes up to the school and pulls the kid out in the hallway. Is, I mean, can you help me, I mean, they like taking them, is it, it's a teacher, it's got to be a teacher position for?
No, it doesn't have to be a teacher position. It can be an aide, like right now, they do have aides who are filling that role. Um, when we have an aide in that role, all they're doing is pulling children in small groups and working on uh, specific skills that the teacher has determined are gaps. When you have a teacher in that role, they are the one who are creating the materials. Not only would they work potentially with the child, they didn't do that at all campuses. Some they, well, some they worked with just tier three, the ones with the most, the furthest behind. But they would do some of the assessment with the child, figure out where the gaps are, create the materials and work with the child. And then potentially work with their intervention team and come up with interventions for students that maybe haven't reached the, the height to need the interventional specialist, but helping the, the teacher um, prevent this student from getting there. So the teacher, it, it just depends.
So if I have five sections of first graders at any particular campus, every one of those classes is going to have tier one, two, and three kids?
Correct.
How often are those tier-three kids in all five sections getting touched by an interventionist if you're?
You know, it's really going to depend on how many kids are tier-three, right? Cause there's only so many hours a day that they're at school and.
And not every class would have tier-three kids.
No, it's gonna be as five to 10% at the very most of a grade level is gonna be at tier-three. More, for us, it's more like a 5% of students, so not every teacher would have that. But, I mean, ideally, they'd be wanting to work with them three times a week for, you know, at least 30 minutes. But now the teacher is doing some of that work. At tier-three, really, they'd want to work with. But now the teacher is doing some of that work. At tier three, really, they'd wanna work with them probably four days a week. Um, the teacher's gonna be able to do some of that in small group and then the interventionist can pull students as well.
And what is a behavioral interventionist?
A behavioral interventionist, interventionist is mostly gonna work with students that are not receiving services through special education because they have a different layer of support built in there. So, it'd be working with students who are, um, gen ed students that are exhibiting extreme behaviors where the normal strategies that a teacher knows how to employ have not been working. So, then the behavior, um, interventionist would come in and would observe the student, would propose some intervention strategies, take some data, meet with all the teachers periodically to review how it's going and then, um.
So, what kind of skill set is that? Is that a counselor, therapist-type position?
No, I mean, it's.
It's a teacher?
It's a teacher, but there are teachers who have other outside certifications, yeah, a skilled teacher with, who may have a specialty background or it may be that they're a BCPA, like they have some other training in their pockets that help with behavior. It is a very specialized position.
When I was over at West last week meeting with those teachers, um, several of the special ed staff was in the room and we were talking about specifically the behavioral support. And our current elementary behavior, like West had one, had a full-time one up until this year and so she's had to kind of be spread around. But her time is spent in gen ed classrooms because typically students aren't getting their special education behavioral support for a good while. There's a whole lot of things that lead up to that before they're ever identified. And so, she said most of her, all of her support that she's been giving has been in a gen ed classroom and that the whole, I mean, we know this, but it's all changed in the last five years. The behaviors in the, in the gen ed classrooms are very different than they were twenty-nineteen. So, and you'll hear that from our staff and, and so that's a, that's, that's a big piece of that is trying to correct those behaviors and get them course corrected so that they don't end up having to need sometimes special education or supports in that.
With that third rule point, really, though, we felt like it could be one person who could serve elementary in sixth grade as a behavior specialist because we are lucky where we don't have a tremendous number of students, but there's enough that we need some support there.
They also help with the MTSS portion. I think that's something you probably, you heard them talk, the teachers talk about, uh, last Wednesday when we were in Austin. They talked a lot about the MTSS process. That's what our specialists were doing up until we don't have those positions. So, it's landed on campus admin and the teachers. The teachers more so, the tier three support, the campus admin, the, the actual process of MTSS. Um, and so that's where those interventionists also have a big role in that. And that's the process that students go through as they're trying to determine whether or not they're going to need specialized instruction later.
And so, is this job viewed favorably? I mean, do teachers want to transition that classroom into the specialist position?
Usually don't have trouble filling those positions.
And so, you'll notice that, um, last slide in the slider, our campus-based support, right? We're talking class sizes and we're talking, uh, campus-level instructional support positions. Well, we are still looking at, at all of our other segments and areas, but our main focus as a priority was campus level. Um, and we felt like that was what we would bring to use campus level. Um, sorry, wrong direction. Our last budget priority is, uh, a balanced budget. So, I would like some feedback on how you feel about that. Is a balanced budget your priority? Um, is that something that we should, should keep in there for this year? Uh, we feel like with the slides that have been presented tonight and the information that we know at this point in time, we can maintain the class sizes and add back a little bit of support, reserve some funding for compensation plan and bring you a balanced budget. Um, if you would rather us focus more on one of the other areas or a different area that we didn't present, then we need to look at what that would do to affect a balanced budget. So, is that in your priority range? Is it what you want us to have as a priority as we're working towards this?
It's always purview to have a balanced budget. It's a true question.
It is.
So, and this whole workshop has been about balance. And so, that, that is just one of the major components of all the balancing acts that, that we're trying to do. I think one of the concerns with, you know, we've taken money out of the fund balance. Um, the Vator did not pass and so the replenishing of that fund balance to not even just growing it, but replenishing it, I mean, that, that's something that you'll have to show us as well with that.
Which that'll be in the budget, that, that, that you're bringing to the next month, right?
In the, in the budget amendment, yes. Um, but we'll also, in this workshop, we'll have some slide, really say slide with some discussion on fund balance and where we're at and where we look to move to. Um, I think I've mentioned in the past that as, as we grow, the amount of our budget grows. So, if you wanna maintain the same percent, then you do have to put money back into that fund balance to maintain that percent. You can keep the same dollar amount, but if your budget is growing, then that percent declines. So, again, a balance of where we wanna be at at this point in time. Um, but we felt like we have a chance of, of presenting you with a balanced budget based on balancing, um, campus-level support, uh, compensation plan and, uh, class sizes.
I mean, I think for me, but we always wanna strive for a balanced budget. But until we have better information back from the campus and the teachers on what they feel is important, what's gonna help them succeed, then it's hard to say that, yes, absolutely one-hundred percent has to be a valid. I want a balanced budget, don't get me wrong.
Right.
But I also want, you know, the campus, the teachers, I want them to be supported. And I want them to know that, you know, the admin, the board, the community has their back. And based on their priorities of what they would like to see, you know, I think that will help you guys determine where dollars potentially need to shift. And if we can do it and get to a balanced budget, great. If, if we're not quite there, then what's that give and take? And is it worth it? So, I think for me, until I understand what the teachers, what the campus admin, what they're feeling, what they feel like they need, it's, it's hard for me to say that I'm one-hundred percent on that, but let's see what we can do.
So, we can, we can get some of that put in, bring back to you for the May workshop. Um, kind of some areas that we're at, you know, we're early in our process, so we've looked at the big areas. Um, you know, we set aside some dollars for areas that we know will increase. Um, you know, property and casualty insurance has taken large increases every year. Um, and we know that that'll be another large increase, so we, we've put some, some pretty hefty dollars towards that. Um, you know, we won't have our information back until, um, probably June at the earliest on that. So, if we've overestimated, it comes in under, we could rip some dollars there. Hopefully, we haven't underestimated on that, but we've got some areas like that. We're still working through our department budgets, um, as far as, uh, seeing the impacts of those. We set aside dollars for those and again, trying to, as we refine that and get closer to an actual recommended budget, we'll refine those dollars in there. But to kind of give you an idea of what we've done so far, we've set aside two million dollars for that compensation plan. Um, we don't know exactly what that would look like, but we had to come up with a dollar amount. Um, and we use historical data and how many staff members we have now to at least come up with the numbers. Cause then in order to plan on what you can fit in, you gotta know what, what numbers you're, you're plugging in. So, we started off with that and we're at, uh, one point five seven, um, million in additional positions. Is, is what we've set our budget on that, trying to fit everything into there, so.
Classrooms, interventionist.
Those things.
Okay.
So, that, that kind of gives you an idea of, and we did that, of course, estimating our revenues, looking at where we're at, our expenses today. Um, which are some of those areas that we know are gonna increase. Um, looking at our campus budget allotments and trying to come up with what, what funding would be available for growth positions um, if we wanted to set aside a compensation package and anything like that. So, that's just kind of the basis where we started, but I do appreciate the feedback and we'll walk on these things.
I'll say this, um, yes, I want a balanced budget. No, I, I got two minutes. Um, but I think, I think when you're building, for me, if I was, if I'm building the budget, I'm saying what, what, what do I want Argyle ISD to be known for? You know, what, cause that's where you're spending your money is where your priorities are, I mean, personally and professionally. And so, you know, I think Argyle needs to have a reputation of being a competitive paid district. It doesn't have to be the highest paid. I think it needs to be a district that is known as having the most well-supported teachers and staff. And whether that's in the form of, uh, from the administration or from, uh, support positions that these teachers feel like they have behavioral support, admin support and interventionist support. And I think that to the extent that we can at those lower grade levels in elementary school, you can reduce those class sizes because it's, it's, it's a, it's a community that expectation, um, that we've tried to maintain, um, since I've been here. I know it's getting harder as we get bigger, but if you, if you're spending your money on those things and can get to a balanced budget, great. And if you can't get to a balanced budget and spend your money on those things, then you need to revisit what you're spending your money on. You know, it's not just, it's like, well, where are, is there other opportunities for efficiencies that would allow us to prioritize these things? That we, we wanna be known for something. And I think when you go out there and just say, we're gonna pack our classes to the max and then we, when we don't have standards and we're just gonna throw twenty-five kids in a fifth grade class, I, I don't think you set your parts, you don't set yourself apart from anybody. And you don't attract good teachers and you don't attract good families when you do that. And I, I would like that to be a budget priority.
So, I, I think there'll be some short, there could be short-term pain on class sizes. I think we all agree with what you said. The, the best way to get reduced class sizes is what?
Buildings.
Pass the bond.
Yeah.
Well, let's just say it, pass the bond.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, huh? Oh, I can, yeah, consider it. Uh, but, I mean, I hear you and I think we all agree. And I think it's good to, to plan and, and for smaller, give yourself some room for growth, but it's really dictated by the space you have, right? So, um, I, I don't disagree with anything you said, but I just wanted to say that, that there could be short-term pain for long-term gain and long, that's, we need buildings.
Yes.
And I would hope that, that all the great people that are moving here because of the great schools we've had are willing to come out and support those new buildings.
And what way that the district can hire and retain more staff is if the community does continue to be involved in passing a base.
Showing their support for the.
Show your support, pass the Vator. You're contributing to, um, financially enriching our educators in that way. You're putting your, you know, your money into the district, giving back, contributing that way. In turn, the district has more funds itself to continue to add positions and add opportunities for our kids. So, um, it, you know, it, we all have to work together. The community is not a singular thing.
But are, are there any other priorities that you may have that we haven't talked about tonight that you would like us to consider and work through?
I don't think so.
I'll just say in closing, I'm glad we get to talk about these priorities again because last year at this time, that was not the case. And if you read anything around, around us, around the state, these are not the priorities people are talking about for their budget process next year. So, we're gonna take it as a win and continue to work to get it where it needs to be, but, um, just very, very thankful we're able to have these conversations right now.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. For a two P.